I'm busy in church. Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you're comfortable standing, okay. If we need to turn the TV monitor on out there, people can't see. Chief Sparker out there. If he wants to go ahead and flip that button for me, chief, that's good. He might also, if he sees the custodian, might take a look at the temperature with the crowd we have. We could lower it a little bit, I think, we can probably. Okay, at this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like everyone's attention. I welcome you. Let's go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of aldermen.
Isley.
Here.
Kinsella.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Randall.
Here.
Anthony.
Here.
Davidson.
Here.
Silsby.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Cybert.
Here.
White.
Here.
Galletti.
Here.
Musgrove.
Here.
Orlett.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Roll call of department heads all over the present. Police chief Bill Clay. Fire chief Scott Wengs.
Here.
City attorney Garrett Warner.
Here.
Royce Carvile.
Here.
Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Jamie Maitred.
Here.
Tim Grellwitz.
Here.
Tim Schneider.
Here.
Leander Spearman.
Here.
Emily Foltz. Chuck Schaefer. Bob Salem.
Here. Chuck Schaefer's on vacation. He's excused. Emily's here, but she went to make me some copies. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to begin by explaining the disaster procedures. We've done this several meetings now. If, for some reason tonight, heaven forbid, we have spoken in the building or any indication from a fire that we had to leave the building, the procedure is that we would all ardently exit the building and report to the sign at the front of the courthouse that says the St. Clair County Building. This is so that we can get a count. It's hard in a public meeting. We don't have a head count, know who's coming, but to do the best we can to make sure everyone's evacuated. If, heaven forbid, the tornado sirens would go off and we would be indicated by dispatch immediately that there was an immediate threat to this facility, there are signs that have been posted for the last couple of weeks. And there is a tornado shelter in the basement. There is a shelter or an area that is deemed to be safe and recognized as such. And you would follow those signs and follow the staff here. There's many staff people here. For the aldermen, Emily went to make me a few more copies, but tonight, before you go home, you will get the ones who didn't get it yet. I ran out of about four copies. I didn't count them. I'm sorry. You're going to get the emergency pack, evacuation packet. I asked you to sign that you received it. Please study it, read it, hang on to it. And you'll have that before you go. She just went to make a few more copies. I think Alderman Holt, Alderman Randall, Anthony, and Schneider are the only ones who didn't get it. You guys are at another meeting. I don't know why everyone ran out, but we did. So we will take care of that housekeeping order in just a moment. As soon as she comes back, we'll give them to you. Okay, tonight, we are going to start public participation in just a moment. I would like to take the opportunity as the chair just to explain a couple of things. At the finance meeting the other night, I think we cleared up a few questions right at the beginning. The big topic that most of you are here about tonight is not about a new tax. It's not about property tax. There's been some confusion the last couple of days. It's about the proposed extension of the quarter percent sales tax. So I want to make sure everybody understands that that's a fact, you know, that we're on the agenda tonight. There's a proposal to extend it. There's been much discussion. And there's no secret that I've been a proponent of extending the tax for the sole purpose of, I believe, this cops grant that we have applied for will allow us to hire four more police officers. And then in the few days and weeks ahead, there's the possibility that if the crime-free housing was passed, then we could hire one to two more police officers with the money that's generated from that program that will be discussed in a public meeting in a few days down the road. We've had the quarter percent sales tax. It is scheduled to sunset December 31st, 2013. It has provenly, and we waited carefully, that we weren't just willy-nilly taking guesses. It has developed just shy of 1.2 million the first year. And it's on track, our finance director believes. With five months in now, it's four months, I guess, a little over four months. We believe it's on track to generate approximately the same this year, about the 1.2 projected. We have, for everyone's understanding, we have been able, in the last two years, or year and a half now with that tax, been able to bring back our reserves to right at 3 million, correct, Jamie? Which is where we were when the bottom fell on the economy. And one of the facts I want to give you, we'll open up questions or comments. In 2009, when the state, and in our state, there's no secret, I'm not telling anyone here anything they don't know, our state has got some severe financial concerns. When they, Jamie, what's the best term? Recalculated. Recalculated the income tax in 2009. We had a reduction of $751,000 in our income that was projected. And that's what prompted the council at that time to take immediate action and to reinstate what was around for many years, the wheel tax. Very unpopular this last time around, and I didn't like it either, having three or four cars in our house and then had to pay the wheel tax. However, we weren't at the timeframe where we could institute the quarter percent sales tax for at least six to eight months where it would kick in, and we made a decision. We appointed a task force. The task force met. Some of you in this room were on the task force. And it was decided to bring forward the quarter percent sales tax as an alternative, which started in 2011. So that's a little history. The economy is not healed, but it's better. As I told you, our reserves are back. Now, we did, since 2009, eliminate approximately 30 positions through attrition, some layoffs. We did not eliminate any policemen or firemen like some cities had to. We did actually hire four new firemen in 2010, I believe it was, nine or 10, is that right, Chief, nine? Nine, when we opened firehouse number four. And so we managed to do that with the safer grant at that time. That's just come to an end, correct, Jamie?
It's close to ending.
Close to ending right now. The four years are about up. So those are a few facts I wanted you to know. And all those things, you know, we did hire back at the council's consent and advice a couple of positions, but we're still probably at least 25 positions down since I took office in 2005. Okay, with that, I'm going to open discussion. When I call on you, please be ardently. Step up to the microphone. Keep your comments to two minutes. This large of a crowd, three at the max, but please don't go over that on courtesy. Give your name and address. And let's be respectful and we'll listen and take your comments. This is for comments, okay? So who wants to go first? The lady, right? Second row.
My name is Kathy Draper. I live at 500 South 19th Street, Belleville. And my comment is, I'm going to make it short and sweet, hopefully. The city attorney doesn't actually know the situation that I've had in my neighborhood. And I'm not going to say any addresses, because you can give it to the mayor with that. But we have, we no longer have a bad apple. We have a rotten apple. Okay, and I have been trying to get a private meeting with the mayor, the chief, Lieutenant Sparker, and yourself. And for some reason, it's always the wrong timing. There's never, nobody can ever get together at the right time. This has been going on for eight years. Okay, four years ago, I heard, it takes time. It's been eight years. My problem has not gotten any better. It's only gotten worse. So I would appreciate it if the four of you could get together. If you wanted housing involved with that too, that's fine. But we all need to get together because something needs to get done in this neighborhood. And for all the alderpeople that were here, yous know that this has been an issue in the neighborhood for the last eight years. We've gone through three. We're on our third housing director since the issue has started. And I want to know where else in the city of Belleville that public urination and in-need exposure in a residential neighborhood is okay. And I don't want to hear that call the police because they say, "Take a picture." Okay, I don't even want to look at it. Why do I want to take a picture of him doing it? Are any of them doing it? Okay, it's not okay. It wouldn't be okay if I lived across the street from a bar, which I don't. But y'all need to get together, and I'm pretty flexible. But we all need to get together, and we need to get this straightened out because eight years is too long to have a rotten apple souring the neighborhood. Thank you.
And Kathy, I just won't respond to you. We've had many conversations. And I told you that we were going to potentially maybe have a meeting. Or, as I told you, because you and your neighbor had such disagreements that we thought maybe it might be advisable that we consider the Human Relations Commission to sit and mediate. It's a consideration. Now, hold on. So we're going to talk. I did tell you that Garrett, our city attorney, the chief and I, and housing are going to meet when I talked to you a couple of days ago, okay?
Couple of days? In at least two weeks.
No, it hasn't happened. It hasn't happened. Okay. Mrs. Holt, you have a question.
I am alderman for that ward, and I would just like to back up what Mrs. Draper is saying and repeat. I have heard this from multiple people in that neighborhood. This is not two neighbors fighting. This is a problem that everyone knows. Please respectfully, I have to include this in.
I want to give you guys a little education in economics 101. We've already heard from the mayor BS one minute. This sales tax extension, this was supposed to have a sunset clause. And there was a reason for that. You know, this was instituted because the mayor said that we were, the state was lagging behind in payments and that they had to have the wheel tax back. Well, they got the wheel tax back. Then we got rid of that, and they put the sales tax back in, which generated double the money. Okay, now you're wanting to build your reserves. You know, we want to build our reserves too. Extending this is the wrong thing to do. The the sales tax, when it was first initiated, I mean, there's been several raises in the sales tax over the years. Tonight upstairs in the sewer committee meeting, they're talking about raising the sewers again 8%. You know, we're getting taxed to death. We're not getting anything for it. You know, this thing was supposed to go away. And I'm going to tell you now, we've got a little group, the Citizens for Social and Economic Progress, and we made a dent in the last election. And those of you who vote for this thing tonight, we're going to make another dent. And it's going to be in where whoever did this votes for this. Second thing, occupancy violations. There's two Velvilles. There's black Belleville and there's white Belleville. In black Belleville, if somebody calls in the city anonymously, the city sends a cop to your door. And they want to come, they force their way in. And they want to go inside the structure and count toothbrushes and look for people that are at the dwelling. Well, let me tell you what happens in white Belleville. When an occupancy complaint is made, the people get a courtesy call, not a cop. And then they say who the one that was doing the complaining is, which that doesn't bother me. That they named me as the complainant did. But there's a difference between white Belleville, and there's a difference between black Belleville. That is the definition of racial discrimination. And it happens all the time in this city. 53.14% of the occupancy tickets, I'm talking just occupancy, for being in somebody's home, are written to 25.1% of the population. Last thing. The city came out, and I was letting some grass grow in the back of one of my properties so it would seed the hill that was going down to a lake, so that it wouldn't erode. Told the city of this. They broke a privacy fence down at my dwelling, went back there and cut it, and then charged me $140 to cut a 22-by-90-foot piece of grass. So in the interest of fairness, mayor, there's a ditch across the street from where one of my properties is, actually, three of my properties. It's 360 feet long. It's 22 feet wide. I've got a bill here. I cut it. And it's almost ready to be cut again. I cut it, and I'm charging you, oh, $140. Here's a copy of my contractor's liability insurance. And I've got the pictures before and after, just like you did with me. Who do I give the bill to?
Your time's up, Mr. Brown.
Do I give it to Jamie?
You can submit the bill to whoever you want.
Well, who do I send it? I'm asking you a question, sir.
You're going to leave it right there in the counter with the clerk.
Okay, very good.
Give it to your own commander. Hold it, you see. Okay. Yes, sir.
Michael Hagberg, 701 Centerville. This, extending this tax is just a big money grab. Wheel tax and subsequent sales tax have collected $3.2 million. And all this was to cover a reduced per capita tax and delayed payments from the state. The per capita revenue has been returned to the pre-tax levels, and the deficit reduced to $600,000. The question of what happened to this $3.2 million won't be answered without allowing public and aldermen to attend open budget workshops. The city's cost for hiring police officers for all four years is $931,000. By extending this to mere one year extension, you could pay for all four years of officers. And that's only if we don't get the grant. If we get the $500,000 grant, the city's portion is only $431,000. And that should easily be able to be found in the budget without, and still accounting for what happened to the $3.2 million they've already collected. Any extra that is collected from this should go towards the reserves and not be spent. We have to cut the spending in the city, and we have to know where the city is spending the money. And one additional message for the aldermen is four of the good government party aldermen who supported creation of this tax are no longer sitting in line. Elections are coming.
Back of the room.
Storeland, 318 South 29th Street, Belleville. If the new aldermen are not going to stick together, if the good government party does, we have accomplished nothing in electing them. 12D on what you're going to propose tonight. Lindenwood car show wants assistance from police and the street department barricades for their car show. Do they pay for this, or is this another freebie from the city? Excuse me, they're getting enough freebies from the city. And Lindenwood's new dormitory looks like a fire trap and has no provisions for tornado shelter, no basement, 180 people to live there. If Belleville is a safe city, as mayor says, why do we need more police? Lindenwood buys up many houses in Belleville, and where do these people go when they sell their house? I doubt if they moved to another place in Belleville. That's a tax base that went somewhere else, probably outside of St. Clair County. And if that's where I'd go if I were sold my house. That's about it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Victoria Wygant, 605 South Pennsylvania Avenue. I have one of them missed, the sales tax. This doesn't bother me mainly because it's not a tax that's being taxed to me personally. It's going to be a tax that I pay when I go shopping and buy different shot glasses, clothes, and things for myself. When I go to Fairview, I go to my favorite store, Cold Water Creek, and it's almost 10% there. Does that stop me from shopping at Cold Water Creek? Ooh! Because that's my favorite clothes. I love the service. I go there because the people are friendly. And so I continue to shop there. I don't not shop there because of the sales tax. But it is a great way for a city to get the revenue it needs for those police officers during the election. You know, the same people are saying, "No, they want to keep all our reserve and not spend the money on anything," are the same ones who are saying, you know, the city is, you know, so dangerous and we need, you know, I do agree that we need more police officers, but I feel like maybe there's some double standards here. The other thing is on this occupancy permit, thing that Mr. Brown brought up, and he is still living at 618 South Pennsylvania, is when I got the former home call, Rick thought my daughter was living at my house. But one thing is, I've been living in that house for 26 years, which I think makes me grandfathered in, which is the same thing that's happened to me with the trailer that across the street from me. They were grandfathered in on the mobile home, you know, harness. So, you know, my daughter doesn't live with me. She's a very independent child. She has two houses right now, actually. And I just think that with these mobile homes, we need to look into how they're taken care of.
Thank you. Yes, sir, and let her roll a little back.
Guy, Don Carlos, 2406 Patrick Drive.
Sorry, the header, sir?
2406 Patrick Drive. I've got a Belleville mailing address. I'm inside the Shiloh City limit sign, and when I call the police, the sheriff shows up.
But you're not in the city. I'm just partnering.
But my question is about the proposed development due east of the Weatherstone subdivision. From my research through the assessor's office, that all those parcels of land are owned by a limited liability corporation incorporated in Texas. And I would like to know if anybody in this room, or anybody in this building, or the courthouse knows who owns the land. If you want to get to the bottom of a problem, you follow the money. Is there anybody, do we know who we're dealing with?
Emily, we got.
I have. I have to get the information in my office, from my office, but.
Can I give you a chart and email that? Yeah, you talk to Emily or call her tomorrow. And we will, there's a procedure, and we'll get it to you. Thank you very kindly. We'll show you what we have. Okay. Who's next? Yes, sir.
Hi, Mayor Ackridge. My name is Brad Van Nis. I live at 319 South McKinley Drive, Belleville. I address this board as a whole. One year ago, tonight, I made inquiry about the availability of videotaping the meetings and having them accessible. At that time, you indicated there was a project through Lindenwood. I've never heard anything about that. Mr. Wygant here has been kind enough to share the videos on YouTube. I say this because I didn't really want it on Charter, because I feel like there are more people with internet access that could see that at less expense.
It's going to be on both. It's going to be.
Right. Well, you think Charter, because we have a franchise agreement through them, or they will help provide some of the costly equipment, but it will be streamed on the internet through Lindenwood and our side.
And we're probably a meeting to two meetings away from it starting. Lindenwood is going to help with the technology and help our staff. They're starting in three weeks, end of the month when school starts. They're starting a program in television. And they're also starting a radio station. And we now are partnered. We're signed up. We have the agreements. We, yes, is it tonight we're voting to file equipment? Well, Mike?
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. But my position on that would be much different. There, if you did the study of how many people have Charter versus AT&amp;T, Uvers, or other internet providers, or television providers, including Dish, not everyone in Belleville has that, so it would limit the audience. Charter is one of the more, I have Charter. It's a premium product. Not everyone in these tough times wants to spend, you know, money on those things, so on Charter.
You will be able to stream it to on the.
Oh, you'll be able to stream it. Okay, thank you.
And Charter did have a grant program that you're going to hear about later in the meeting that's going to rebate us several thousand dollars on equipment, so.
Right, I just don't think we should have to go through any expense like that. We could do it ourselves and then post the video to YouTube. I do it all the time. It's very easy.
We want quality, and we want to have some controls and checks and balances.
What controls or checks and balances are you speaking of?
On the programming and having somebody, you know, make sure that we're going to have, you know, and it's also going to be for other things, not just the city council only. It could be zoning board meetings. It could be special events. It could be safety things that the police or fire department choose to, that we produce. that the police or fire department choose to, that we produce for the public, for the education of the city. So there's a host of things we see as beneficial.
Okay. I also want to say that I came in tonight, came here tonight, didn't support a bunch of folks here about this sales tax. I live in Belleville's Ward 7. I just want to let it, I'm really not familiar who my alderman is since Bill didn't win for mayor in Lillian's redistrict, but I can tell you this, that as my ward alderman, I can't support you in the next election if you extend this sales tax. So I just respectfully have to convey that to you. And what is your name? Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Patty Law. I live at 221 East Main. I have been a hairdresser for over 40 years, so I know everything. I'll do the job, though. I don't know anything. I do know, I have never once in all my years have ever heard anyone say, "I am so proud of our government." So we don't want to be that way tonight. We have a mixed, a very mixed council. And I know it's very hard for everybody to get along, but I would hate for Belleville to be looked upon the same way our government is looked upon, because it's not looked upon pretty. And you are picked by Belleville for a reason, and it's not to listen to each other bigger. Your interest for the people should come first. You should put your own stuff, stuff aside, your party aside, and think about the people of Belleville. I do have a lot of elderly people, I do. This, if there's such a thing as a word of easy tax, that would have to be the word, because everybody hates tax. It sounds like axe, and it hurts. This tax, you don't have to have it. It's real simple. Anytime anybody's taxed, the elderly and the underprivileged always get hit the worst. Not with this one. Food is most important to them, and there's prescriptions. Neither one of those are taxed. What's taxed is other things, your clothes, your TVs, or whatever. One of my 80-year-old women customers told me, she said, "You know what?" She said, "If I, I agree with this, because if I have enough money to buy clothes and buy TVs and stuff, then what is a quarter on a hundred dollars?" I mean, so if you don't want to do that, shop somewhere else. You don't have to shop in Belleville. But let me tell you about Belleville. I don't, I don't care how beautiful your town is, and I don't care how nice your town is, if your town is not safe, no one's gonna move it, and they're not gonna shop it. I love, I remember you hiding, guess what? I don't shop it. Because I, I do during the day, but not in the evenings. I don't feel safe there. All right? So therefore, if this money is used for more policemen and firemen, oh, let me tell you something. Get, go through a fire and see what happens. Go through a fire and see what happens. If we didn't have the firemen that we have, that whole building would have been, that whole block would have been gone. I'll tell you right now, you'd want more than 25 cents a dollar on a hundred-dollar tax when you needed firemen, because they're fantastic. And our policemen, when you see those policemen around, people say, "Well, that's so much money, we, we, you know..." Okay, I'm sorry, Mark, just a minute. "That's so much money. We, that's poor policemen, but guess what? We got more money, we'll hire more policemen." I guarantee you the people will feel safe. I listen to what these people talk to me about. If you feel safe in the town, you're going to enjoy the town. And so I am totally for this tax. If you don't like it, shop somewhere else.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. You're next.
Mary McHugh, 7503 West Main.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's okay, now you're... Belleville is a beautiful city. I enjoy it every day. It's alive, and it's vibrant. Now, I'm gonna say, get over that lady that just stood up here. Mr. Mayor, we give credit you for giving 100% plus of your time and effort and ideas for the city. And we're so proud of you and what you've done. And also your staff. How often do they thank you to that staff? They're kind, they're considerate. I have dealings with almost all of them from time to time. And not only are they kind and considerate, they're intelligent. So, I believe in this tax. I, I don't like what I hear of these threats that I'm not gonna vote here. The lady said, "A quarter on a hundred dollars of things you don't have to have." I was on the task force that wrote this for you. I thought it was a no-brainer then, and it's a no-brainer now. We need this tax to get these policemen and other things. We want a swimming pool here, would this help us with that in any way, shape, or form? So I don't need to say anymore, because the lady here told it all. Let's hit this tax, it's a no-brainer, and I feel it's a privilege that the citizens of this town could do, to do this for us. It's a privilege. I don't have money to throw around, but this is not gonna hurt my pocketbook. Thank you so much.
Who else would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Jerry Boyer, 208 East Main Street, and if you want to represent the Main Street organization in town. So the Main Street organization would like to say that they have not found this tax to hurt their business at all. Matter of fact, they don't think that people actually even notice it, and their concerns would be that if we did get rid of the tax, again, people wouldn't even notice it, if we give up an opportunity to be able to put police on the, on the street, which is what they're very interested in. They appreciate the, the coverage of the police now, but they really would like to see more police on the street. The other thing, as a business owner, I'd like to say that when I try to hire people for short-term jobs, I have difficulty finding really good quality people. So I would say that please at least consider, if you're going to extend this one, and I hope you do, that you extend it for four years, because people don't want to switch jobs, good people, talented people, if they're not, if they don't know if they're gonna have security for at least four years. So I want you to at least consider that. And then last but not least, I'm taking guidance from Rick here, many things. I'd like to say congratulations to the city on opening the dog park, because I don't know about you, but if anybody was there, my dogs enjoy themselves, they could barely walk home, they were so tired. And there was at least 40 dogs there, and it was really a great day for Belleville on Saturday, so congratulations for getting that opened. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Dennis Wygant, I live at 605 South Pennsylvania Avenue. I'd like to bring up tonight, since there's so much conflict with the judges and that the city council here will voluntarily take a drug test. I'd like to see you all just take a drug test and not, not just, because I have to take it for my job, and I'd like to see you do a hair test here, you know?
True.
If it's possible, you know? Well, you can do that. Let me take it anywhere. Like, you bring it up, you know, in a voluntary, you know?
We'll, we'll take your advice.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, is there anyone in the CPA? One, one thing I just want to clarify, it was talked about, I didn't say it in my opening statement, I don't think I did, is this 40% sales tax, or 0.25% that we've had installed since the beginning of 2011, is not on groceries, it's not on prescription drugs, and it does not affect automobiles. So if you buy a new vehicle, it does not get added to that. So just to make sure that you understand those exceptions, because as was said here, and I picked up on the fact, I forgot to state that, people who are on really tight incomes, when you have prescription costs soaring, and when food is a big thing, you put food on the table, it will not affect you at the grocery store, the pharmacy, or if you're buying clothing. Okay? Just want to make sure you understand that, that that... Jamie, is that Alfred? Okay, my CPA told me I was right. Okay, is there anyone else tonight?
Lee Otis Griffin, Chairman of the Citizens for Social and Economic Progress, 305 North Charles, Belleville. We have some grave concerns, but first and foremost, I want to commend this young man for asking everybody to take a drug test. I don't care if you're a judge, I don't care if you're a county employee or a city employee. We need drug tests. Good government mandates sober minds. Judges can't judge when that judgment isn't earned due to drugs. So that's a great thing, again, I commend him. And Mr. Rick Brown talked about the housing issue. Well, that's a real sore issue with me, because again, over at the housing department where we're trying to pass a crime-free housing, we have no minorities. You've heard my argument. We have no paper pushers. Nobody's careless. Nobody's trying to hire no African-American officers or get people over there that's gonna enforce this thing, you know, equally for everybody. It's all one-sided. We don't have that for the homeless piece of people. We talk about Joe Hubbard. We don't care about the homeless here. You know, we got all these facilities that we're buying up. We can do something about the homeless people. That's what guys say. Take care of the homeless people. We have nothing. We closed the Salvation Army down. We don't care about the homeless. This is taxation without representation. People are so disemployed with this government. It ain't about the taxes, the 25 cents and all that, but what you're doing right now, you have people that's struggling, don't have no jobs. Out of approximately 400 city employees, it's like maybe 26 African-Americans. And you talk about the NAACP, hey, they don't care about wars, because they're saying, people say they're the best that money can buy. Let's do something for our people. Let's do something for this. And now we're talking about the trash and sewer going up, eight more percent? You've got people right now that when they can't afford their trash and sewer bills, the water company taxes them 100 and some odd dollars just for a reconnection fee. They're already struggling. They're one step from being out of their home already. Do we care about this thing? We're here just taxing and taxing. You know, if we were seeing some of this money, we don't have a swimming pool. We have very few minorities. You know, so what do people do? Just lock everybody up and, and just don't do anything and just tax it? We need to manage our money better. If we manage our money and stop buying so much real estate in this town and be fair to everybody, it'll make some changes for everybody. Belleville could be a great city if we stop having that arrogant attitude and look out for the homeless people. And anybody that's trying to get some more trash and sewers that's already hot, and people are losing their homes already, you're pushing these people over the edge. So thank you all for your time. I hope you'll be sensitive to the people that don't have service wounds in their mind. It takes a lot to live in this town already. So let's do something and show something for our money. Again, taxation without representation is not getting us anywhere. Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening wishes to speak? And I will close public participation. Okay, at this point in time, we'll get to the items we're going to discuss a little bit. The only thing tonight I have under recognition, presentation or appointments is recognizing the character word of the month is caring, meaning being compassionate and showing your care to others, and showing others you care. And I think we need to continue to follow those character traits. This time I'd ask for a motion for the special city council meeting minutes held June 26, 2013, and a regular city council meeting minutes held July 15. Do I hear a motion? We have motion by Alderman Concilla.
Second.
Second by Alderman Heiser. To accept those two minutes and have them filed, is there any additions or corrections? Hearing not all in favor of accepting this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear, but there's no public hearing this evening. We don't have anything said. We have now claims, payroll, and disbursements. What's your pleasure?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to pay claims, payroll, and personnel.
Motion by Alderman Heiser, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear a discussion? Roll call.
Heiser.
Aye.
Concilla.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewiss.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Silstey.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Schneider.
Motion carries. Reports, zoning board of appeals advisory reports.
Case number 38, July 13, Victor M. Keepo, requesting a special use permit for a liquor license at 100 North High Street.
Do I hear a motion? All in the board? Motion by Alderman Holt, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear a discussion? This would be in the name of the, and this would be a motion to have approved this recommendation to have the proper ordinance drawn. Correct?
Yes, sir.
Everybody understand that? All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Case number 39, July 13, James L. Hallcarly, requesting a special use permit in order to operate a used car dealership at 10400 West Main Street.
I, I approve the request and have the proper ordinance drawn.
Motion by Alderman Musgrove, second by Alderman Orland, to approve and have the proper ordinance drawn. Discussion.
How does the building, this building is currently occupied by a church, is that correct?
Yes.
Part of the building.
Okay, part of the building is occupied by the church, and he's gonna have his cars out there on the lot, and, and me and the church are, are okay with each other.
Yes. Check with both.
Is he gonna be using the building for part of his business?
Just an office section.
Okay. And do, is that something not used as a polling place? Would that in any way affect that?
No.
Okay. So everybody involved is all communicating, happy with each other?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just for the audience to say, this is the old Elder Cadillac building we're talking about, at 10,400 something else, maybe.
They don't sell cars on Sunday, and so the parking lot will, will not interfere with the business.
And there's still enough, we're, for the churchgoers to park.
We have a motion and a second to approve this, to approve this variance and have the proper ordinance drawn. All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Case, case number 40, July 13, Ron and Winter, requesting used variance in order to operate a daycare for 35 children and four staff at 19 South 97 Street.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to approve this, because the zoning board, there were three that voted for it, but it's not adequate to pass the zoning board. However, I would like to approve, I make the motion to approve the used variance and have the proper ordinance drawn with stipulations that all the state requirements and the safety regulations and a safety fence is to be erected for the outside play area before the daycare is open for business. So move.
We have motion by Musgrove, we have a second by Alderman Orland, with those stipulations. Correct, Alderman Orland, they accept those. Okay, we have a motion and a second with the stipulations as just explained. Any further discussion or questions?
Oh, only Musgrove, were there members of the neighborhood who were not happy with this, do you? Is that what you're not about there?
In fact, the one lady did show up that was, she lived on the same street.
Okay. Emily, this name seems familiar to me. Has this person applied for something similar?
She has applied for in-home daycares in the past, and they deny for in-home daycares that are not in a commercial location yet.
Okay, okay.
We have a motion and we have a second to approve this request and have the proper ordinance drawn. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. In your packet, you have a city attorney's report. Now, Jared did put them together. We used to, I think, in the past, have one for a city attorney, one for assistant city attorney, but you probably noticed the two reports are combined. Do I have a motion to accept these reports and have them filed? Motion by Alderman Concilla and second by Alderman Heiser. Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. Underneath the demolitions, when you talked about before, I know some of these properties are all being down, and we're just trying to get some cost back. Are there others that are, are different stages of this?
Actually, the demolition matters are being handled by Mr. Concilla. That is something that I can, I can find out with him, and I'll get back to you on that matter.
I mean, I need to ask one if it will work, but it would make more sense to be able to kind of catalyze, these are down, we're trying to recover costs, and these are the ones working These are down, we're trying to recover costs, and these are the ones working hard for it.
Certainly we can.
Okay, I do have some other questions you probably can answer. Some of these cases we see quarter after quarter, there's, we're still there. I know you have dates on some of them. So you have some answers coming up on some days.
And I, and I would ask that if we're going to have a discussion about the specifics related to a case, that we do so in executive session under litigation.
Okay, okay, that's cool. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the city attorney, assistant city attorney's report, which is only one, dated August first, two thousand thirteen. Any, we do have a motion and a second, so I lost track. All in favor of accepting, signify by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All reports. Alderman Heisler, let's take these one at a time.
Yes. Your Honor, before I make the motion, I'd like to know the correct, the omission of air plumbing and heating in the payment request thirty-seven.
Okay, that was supposed to be part of this as a typo, is that it?
Right.
Is any, is any paperwork, do we have it or?
It's, it was. We had two surrogates.
Okay. Okay, go ahead and state, state, state the motion.
On, on behalf of the master sewer committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve the long-term control plan construction payment request number thirty-seven of Corte Lujon's air plumbing and heating tubular waste immersion for a total amount of eight hundred forty-six thousand, two hundred eleven dollars and thirty-three cents. So move.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Hayden. Okay, so here was just committed from the type, but it was part of the total. I found, okay. Everybody standing? We have motion, we have a second for payment of those payments out of the long-term control plan. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewiss.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Schneider.
Motion carries. Alderman Cybert.
Yes, Your Honor, I have a motion on behalf of the street curators to approve a little bit of road paid traffic with an amount of forty-nine thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and forty cents for twenty thirteen payment marking. So move, Your Honor.
Second. Motion by Alderman Cybert, second by Alderman Consilla. And you note that this payment is paid in combination of motor fuel fund and TIF funds. Any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewiss.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Schneider.
Motion carries. Alderman Sillsby, would you want to take those separately, please?
Yes. Your Honor, on behalf of the finance committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of equipment for televising city council meetings for modern, modern communications incorporated. So move.
Second, Your Honor. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Hayden. Do we have the specifics spelled out and do you guys all have it in your packet? Okay, everybody sees it? Is there any questions? Hearing none?
I, I'm sorry. I thought Lindenwood was going to run a telephone and I understood they were going to have the equipment. I was a little bit surprised if I missed my packet.
Done. Jamie?
That is for the equipment in these counter chambers. They will have all the televising equipment on there and that will put it through to Charter and on the internet.
We're, we're not buying equipment for them. We're just buying equipment for cameras in here. Or a camera that we could use if we're filming some other city function, a training thing or something for the police department that would be, need to be educational. We have.
Okay. You mentioned the Charter and the one from Alford's agreement for that.
We're getting this includes the grant. If you read.
Does the equipment cost us sixteen thousand, we will get six thousand of that back through Charter.
Okay. I don't know anything about this other than electronics are always evolving. Is there a reason we are buying versus renting?
I don't think it's an option that we could find that was anywhere near reasonable. This is the same compatible equipment that Charter and, and Lindenwood have used on other projects. They do it over in St. Charles, they do it at other locations. And we, we researched it, but this was the method brought forward. Alderman Hayden?
Yes, Your Honor. I was at the finance committee meeting. Two things that the public needs to know, it's the expenditure here is not sixteen thousand six thirty-seven, it's ten thousand six thirty-seven minus the grant that we earned invoking from Charter. We asked very specific questions, I know I did during the finance committee in relation to why the one did, why this company. The bottom line is that this is the company that has compatibility of the equipment. We don't want to be mixing for lack of terms, you know, you know, one company Sony with, with, you know, Hyundai or whatever, these different companies, they have to work in synchronicity. The likely, livelihood of, of these pieces of equipment, we're discussed. And if I'm not mistaken, that we felt that from general stat that we were going to get at least, you know, five, six years out, out of that, you know, so that, that's, that's a pretty good timeframe for what this is. And this has been a long time coming, Your Honor, and, and this is, we're, we're basically a month away from getting this on. There, I've heard the people that are concerned that this is only going to be on Charter. As you clarified tonight, it's also going to be livestreamed. And I believe once it is on Charter, that that, from past discussions, gives us the ability to talk to Charter, even possibly work out something with AT&T. Because Charter provides basically for AT&T, cable services, AT&T provides for Charter phone. And, and there's, there's a multitude of things that we can do, but we got to get this first set up. And this is what this does tonight.
And we'll just have to plan another budget if there's other adjustments or equipment to be changed. This is our job to plan. It'll certainly give us a couple of years to evaluate, but I know some of you may not realize it, but, you know, Alderman Hayden and I have agreed. I think it's great to put these meetings. I think everybody should see these meetings. So I'm, I'm happy to see it happen and we're about a month away. Yes, sir.
Okay. I, I did not touch your meaning when you talked, it sounded like editing. What, what is your intention about that?
No, it's not so much editing. It's just that as, as they branch into other things, we, I've assigned Sharon Strasba, who is our marketing person, to work with Lindenwood and that satisfied them. As if they want to start to do, or people start to all of a sudden request other programming, it's going to have to go through the administration and not just everybody pick up the phone and call and say to Lindenwood, we want this, this department, we're going to have to have a process. And that's what they wanted, somebody to streamline, and, and that's why. Alderman Hayden?
Yes. And further, Your Honor, that, that is going to be one of the great things about this besides the ability to bring city council meetings on TV, people at home, as well as finance committee meetings and, and other important meetings, other public events. We will be able to, and, and yes, there's going to be somebody in control. We can, we can run twenty-four seven if we wish, all the various different things that are going on in the city, you know, about the dog park. What is the dog park fee? How do you get a dog park license? How do you get a park rec program? And it does a multitude of things of public information that can be run twenty-four seven that people can tune into at their leisure and watch and, and sometimes be candid. That might be more enjoyable than what's on TV now.
I don't know what to say. Okay.
How soon will this meeting commence? Can you give us?
I, I think we're one or two meetings away.
Okay.
Jamie, what do we say? But probably.
Quickly. I would say like the latest October. They got to get up and running.
Yeah, but, but we, I honestly believe what they told me the other day is they think the second meeting in September is very due. That's what, that's what they're targeting.
I understand, but maybe it's a bunch.
I understand, but that's, but that's what they're targeting for. So we're about, we're about a month away, thirty days approximately, a little over. Okay, we have a, we go back. We have a motion and a second, right? Who made it?
Sillsby and Hayden.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewiss.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next motion is a motion to extend the zero point two-five percent home rule sales tax for two years and to sunset December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, and then conduct an advisory referendum in November two thousand fourteen on the topic to let the public give input. That came from committee. It, it was a, a long evening, somewhat, maybe a little confusing, I heard afterwards, but is there someone willing to make that motion tonight from, from the committee?
I'll make that motion now.
Okay, the motion came from the chairman of the committee. So we have a motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Randall. I open the floor for discussion. Alderman Schmidt?
Okay. I found that this is somebody named Peter Thomas in that hospital, but I have followed along and gotten my bag and had a lot of time to really study them. I would like to make an amendment to that motion, that we just make this tax permanent. Because I think we need police officers. I can, last week we were subject to some over twelve feedback and out of eighteen people that I talked to, a couple really didn't believe their name and hung up. But I had sixteen people said, once I explained this to them, that it's not on food, it's not on drugs. And what it really is, they're like, well, yeah, that's what they were in favor of. They want more police. And secondly, I think we can't hire policemen and then say, well, your job might be up for dismissal in two years because we might not have the money. This is, as it was noted, it's a painless tax. And I think a lot of people weren't aware they had it. A lot of people thought this was some new tax we were bringing up, and it's not. This way we can hire police officers, they can know that we're not getting rid of them in two years, the money will be there. We also need money for other things. The police have other needs. I think a lot of, I mean, I'd like to see a lot of this money earmarked that we can give to police and fire department what they need because these are people that put their lives at risk every day across. So I think the least we can do is make sure they have enough staff and they have enough tools to do the job that we're going to do. And as someone else mentioned, you know, maybe if we have a surplus, if you go to one of our reserves, we could make, a pool. A lot of people want that. And that's, you know, there's a slot kind of thing. For that reason, I think we should go ahead and make this permanent instead of having to revisit this every two years. The council, the city staff can focus on other things, maybe budget planning is a little easier when you know this is going to, you know.
Okay, sir. We have a motion by Alderman, amended motion by Alderman Schmidt, and a second by Alderman Consilla.
Yes.
Okay, I'll open it now for discussion. Yes, sir. Hold it, hold it, hold it. I, Alderman White raised his hand. I've been here for a while. No, I didn't. I was pointing right over at Alderman White.
Your Honor, I, I really am in favor of making it permanent now, at least now. The entire state of Illinois is flexibility, we don't know what our money is coming back. We have potential streams of new income that are not yet fully perfect, we don't know what, what it's going to be. I would recommend that we continue with the two-year tax and reevaluate when things could bear it out and we know what financial status is going to be, we actually know what our income is going to be. Then we can make a more intelligent decision. Perhaps eventually it might have to be a permanent tax. But I think it's too early in the system to draw that conclusion. I think we have to, we have to evaluate and then make an intelligent decision on the complete to get a bigger one.
All right.
Yes, Your Honor, I, I would definitely vote against the amendment to make it permanent. And if it never passes, then I would, I would vote against the entire measure. At the finance committee meeting, for those of you that are there, Your Honor, we came together, for those of you out in the audience that know, I voted against this tax two years ago. I have a letter that was sent to a, a Mr. Strange of the American for Prosperity. I'm going to summarize that letter and I've submitted and will submit it to the end of the record of the minutes. But basically, the, the people out there need to know that, that Alderman Hayden has not given up on his push for budget reforms, TIF reforms, budget workshops, and all of the other things that I suggested in the past. But the finance committee meeting came together and I thought that they brought together a, a very well orchestrated compromise, Your Honor, of, of both, for lack of terms, the, the, the government party people and the independents. And Your Honor, the public needs to know that the Aldermen up here are putting aside their personal issues and their partisan issues, and we are working together for the benefit of the people of the city of Bellevue, which is what our goals are. And I think that is what we have done. We have proven that we have three million through the dialogue that you and I established and we forwarded that committee, those are in the record, that we have established a three million dollar surplus, which really is, is, is very small for a size of town of our city. I think we need six million. I'm going to be pushing to recommend, Your Honor, that that three million be placed in a lockbox, separated into accounts, so the public can see that we're not spending that money. But in the meantime, we have to, to come together and work together. The public doesn't want to see their government sitting here day in, day out at these meetings,[1469.88] The public doesn't want to see their government sitting here day in, day out at these meetings, working against each other. So as I analyzed this, there was two things that allowed me, after the Finance Meeting, to come to a conclusion to support it. And one, which the amendment takes away from, is the fact that the Finance Committee recommended that the public get to vote in November general election of 2014 on their position on this tax, which will give us a clear reasoning of does the citizens want the tax or do they not want the tax? But the more important thing, Your Honor, is, is brought through this process, bringing more police officers to the streets. Now, you and I, in this past mayor race, chased each other from one end of East Main to the other end of West Main, talking to each other. And we know, Your Honor, that crime was the number one issue on the people's minds. And it was verified by the Bellevue News Democrat, throwing in fifty homes. This measure tonight brings four. If you talk about other measures, I believe within the budget of money that we could even put an additional one with our own money if we go through the proper committees such as the Police and Fire Committee, through the Finance, and put five. Ladies and gentlemen, if we put five...
Another call.
Which part? We, I believe that there is enough money, and, and I'm willing to bring to the Police and Fire Committee with the additional money of, of the surplus, that we push to, to hire one or two more of our own police officers, and as you go through the Police and Fire Committee, Alderman Holt, and then to the Finance Committee. So now with the cops grant, we're talking, and possibly two others on our own, ladies and gentlemen, we're talking four to six. You know, we've got the merits of, of the, uh, you know, uh, crime-free housing, that could add one or two, depends on, on the individuals, Alderman's position on, on the, uh, fee there. But the police chief, ladies and gentlemen, I asked the man, I asked the man right after I was elected in, in 2011, what do we need to do to change the perspective in this city? And he told me, Alderman Hayden, if we could put ten police officers on the street, we could start putting the deterrent force out there that would change the perspective of, of what is going on in this city. And tonight, we have come together, the mayor and I, and we don't normally agree on much, but we have come together. It's not a question of reaching across the aisle and, and, and working together. As a matter of fact, Mr. Siber, Mr. Sylvia are sitting right next to me, and we've reached across to each other and shaking hands, saying that we need to support this because that is what the people want. They want that. And I'll tell you right now, as a stance, if it comes to a vote in November of 2014, I'm likely to vote against it, as far as extending the sales tax. But I'll tell you what, ladies and gentlemen, if you want to know the best way to get the vote out, for people to vote to keep this tax, let's keep putting more police on the streets, ladies and gentlemen. Not four, not five, let's put on six, seven next year, add a few more, and people start driving around, and they start seeing the police, the people start feeling safer in their homes. The property values of my home starts going back up instead of down. We start getting more confidence in our city. We start seeing some of the houses with for sale signs starting to sell. We start seeing people have, uh, better confidence in our city and come in and shop. More people in our city going out and buying more, and we drive up to sales towns. And that is how we're going to change our city to the better, and that's why I support this tax tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Hayden, you, you make it sound like you and I had a kumbaya campaign. Hang on, I'm talking now. Now, the night of that Finance Meeting, the vote was four to two when it came to me, and by then it already had passed, and there was a little confusion, but we won't go into that. I will tell you right now, you're talking a good game about hiring more cops, but if we don't pass this, um, this measure, and if you, I will tell you right now, if this council takes this for two years...
In order, Mr. Mayor, if you want to comment, you must put down your panel as moderator. You may not comment...
He, he made comments about what I said.
Listen, Alderman, you are the moderator.
Alderman Holt, I will take a minute to explain and answer a couple of things, and, uh, I appreciate you not blocking out.
I appreciate you following your orders.
Well, then we'll start following all the rules, and we can, we can do that. We'll, we'll have it all done, because we, we can do that. I'm very lenient with all of you. Now, it's easy to say, ladies and gentlemen, we want to hire a whole bunch of cops, but if we don't have the money... My point is this, as the chief executive officer of this city, I can in good faith have the chief and the, and the Police and Fire Commission hire officers if this cat tax is going to sunset in two years, because how do you go and recruit young people and talent? Now, there's confusion about this tonight. The Alderman, many of you came to me, called me, or stopped me, and said, these calls that were received, my point is, if you get this out in the public, you can, you can confuse people totally. They thought they were, some of them thought it was going on in property tax, some of them thought it was a brand-new tax. You make phone calls, robocalls, and you do this, you can confuse people thoroughly. We're elected to make decisions. And, and the, the bottom line is, during the election, I was the bad guy because we didn't hire enough cops. Now, there's, and we've watched this and monitored this so that we feel comfortable. The last thing I want to do, the hardest thing I did in the last eight and a half years was lay those six or seven people off and call them in my office and tell them their job was eliminated. That's not an easy thing to do as a chief executive officer. The last thing I want to do is close a firehouse, our layoff for policemen, because we don't have the money, because we didn't project right. So I just don't want to be misquoted. I do agree with Mr. Hayden. We all heard crime is an issue. Our police department does a fabulous job. They work hard. Our fire department does likewise. They put their lives on the line for us. And as much as I do tout that I believe Bellevue is a safe city, I do think in the world we live in today, to hire some more cops is the right thing to do. So tonight, the question is, do we have the courage to keep this tax? You can always sunset. You can always sunset. And, and, and I guess that, that can always happen. You can come back and vote. And if the people vote us out of office because we voted to extend, keep this, now, not extend a new tax, keep this tax so that we can hire, hopefully, at least four more. And I agree, crime-free housing passes, two more. My goal is to have six more cops before the next twelve months or less. That's my goal, and I've been hoping about it. But before we rushed out and did it, we, Jamie and I had to see the numbers play out. You can't play with people's lives. Some of these people come here from other states and other cities and pack up and move here to take these jobs, and it would be terrible disservice to hire them, bring them here, and in two years, uh, have this go down to defeat, because of all the confusion we saw can happen real quick when you use the word "tax" and turn around and have to lay them off. It would be a disservice. Alderman Schneider was next, and then Alderman Consul.
Um, I would like some, to make a suggestion on the, when it goes on the ballot. It was suggested to have it non-binary. I think it needs to be bi-key. Um, if it's, for whatever we come up with. This is just a suggestion on part of it. I don't know if I need to make an amendment on that or what.
Right now, we have an amendment, just so I understand, we have an amendment to vote on first, just so we don't get ahead of ourselves here. There's an amendment right now to the original motion that came from Finance to, at this point in time, I understand it, make the tax, just make the tax permanent.
No, no, Finance, it was two years...
No, her amendment just said it.
Oh.
So we right now have a motion on the floor for an amendment, which we have to vote on first.
Then can I make an amendment?
Let's, let, no, let's get the amendment voted on first. Other amendments can be considered, but let's get the amendment voted first. Alderman Consul is next.
I seconded Alderman Schmidt's amendment to make it permanent, because I don't want to hire police officers for two years. I don't want to hire them for four years. I want to hire them permanently. Thank you.
Alderman Silks, then you'll be next.
Your Honor, at the Finance Committee meeting, I was one of the no votes, and the main reason I voted no, uh, was that I, I felt four years' extension was better, mainly because then we would have a better outlook and see what's going to happen with some of our finances. Because the point came up at the meeting about, uh, the video gambling and what money that was coming in. Right now, that we can't tell, because not all of that is taking place within, within the city, and we don't know that, and to rely on that. That's 1.2 million. We don't know where we're going to come from at that point. So that's why I voted no. Uh, I support the four-year, uh, but at the same time, if that was not going to provide, then I would support the two-year.
Okay. Alderman White.
My comments earlier, Your Honor, were not correct, if not passing the tax itself, for the length of time only. I definitely am not against passing it for two years and evaluating. Like you, I don't want to hire a police officer for a year. And just because the tax is scheduled to sunset doesn't mean we have to make it sunset. If our finances in the two years cannot support the continuation of officers, then, then we, as a city council, and we as the executive, need, need to address that again. I'm not suggesting that we should ever terminate policemen before they say for full retirement, by my...
I agree. Alderman Holt.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just to echo Alderman White's comments there, um, you know, the preface is, at the Finance Committee meeting, um, I stood up and said I was against the idea to make this a permanent tax. With the economy, the way that it's been struggling, and with the sluggish improvement it's been making, and with the other revenue sources that might be coming into the city, we really don't know where we're going to be at within two years' period of time. That is why, when I made the recommendation that it be a two-year sunset, and also that it go to the general election in November 2014, it was with, in agreement with you, Your Honor, that it would be an advisory referendum that would allow the council to reevaluate our situation at that particular point in time, so we could make a more informed decision with where we stand. I understand Mr. Silks' point about making it a four-year sunset, but I would have to say that I am totally against making this tax permanent. As I explained to my son, uh, when I was taking him to the soccer tryouts last Friday afternoon, said, "Dad, why are we getting all these calls from these people upset about the tax? And you're asking them what they know about it? They really don't know what the issue is really all about." And I explained to him, it's 25 cents on a hundred-dollar purchase, not including groceries, medicine, and vehicle purchases. That that 25 cents on a dollar, if a family were to spend $400 a month, okay, that's one dollar in additional tax revenue. It's $12 annually, and if you divide that $12 by 365 days, and that's when he told me, "Dad, it's getting too hard," I said, "Well, here's my phone, and here's the calculator. It's 3.2 cents per day to bring four additional cops onto this police force." I'm against extending this. I'm against the amendment to make this tax permanent. I'm in favor of keeping the motion as it was to begin with, as it came out of the Finance Committee.
Alderman Davidson.
Uh, thank you. I was one of the ones on the Finance Committee of the two. I was one of the two that voted against this. I voted against it because of the two years. I'm against the idea that, uh, we, we're going to hire somebody, and in two years from now, we're going to decide whether they have a job or not. Alderman Schmidt said, uh, Alderman Schmidt said, uh, "Permanent. Permanent is a hard word. It really is a hard word. It's one of the all, it's never, it, it, some words are, you know, are a red line." And, but I am against the idea that it's only two years. A, a four-year, uh, sunset is, to me, reasonable. It's, it's a compromise between permanent and two years. Uh, and I would be willing to vote for two years, or four years, but I'm not willing to accept two. Just one, the, the only point I have to make is about the two years, is that the people, these 16 people that are up here are here to govern. We don't govern by referendum, referendum. We don't govern, uh, we're here to make hard decisions, and sometimes those decisions might disagree. Every, there's 16 of us, citizens, mayors. We're not all going to agree this is democracy. But what we don't do is throw it out. Every time there's a hard decision, throw it out and let everybody else decide. Let somebody else decide. No, the decision is going to be, should be made here, not on a referendum.
Alderman Schmidt.
Is it possible for me to change my amendment? I'm sure you're going to approve that. Can I make it a four-year instead of permanent?
If your second would agree to do the four-year. So you'd like to change your amendment to say four years minimum?
Yes.
And Jamie, just so we understand some clarity of times, that would then be all of 14, 15, 16, and it would sun, it would sunset in December 31st of 17.
Correct.
That will give us a much better time, because the last thing I'm going to do is lay off cops.
Is that maybe the work of the way you're going, that's your intention? So your intention is that it's to be, and you just do our job?
And then we'll have a chance to see what the gaming really does. Right now, we have no, we have no pulse on the gaming. We have so few establishments hooked up, we have so little money turned in because it's got a lag time. That wouldn't make a difference far as getting feedback. Uh, okay. Alderman Davidson.
I, I just want to reiterate something that wasn't brought up during tonight, but what brought up the Finance Committee. And the things about the gaming, the gaming money, who figures the social revenue. But we have to remember what the state is. When this thing started, because the state was not paying, the state is $19 billion behind. They're $80 billion behind in their pension. Do you think that we should depend on the state that they're going to pay us what they owes? That would be a huge mistake on our part. We need to get to build up our revenue, or build up our reserves again by listening to the state, trusting the state. We have to take care of this ourselves.
Alderman Schneider.
Uh, yes. But one of my questions is, you say we have to keep this to keep the police officers, all right? What happens if the state gets further and we get more behind? Are we going to have to create another tax to get caught back up because we need this for the four police officers?
I don't get that, first of all. We don't know until that would happen.
Well, then, it'll be going up again. I, I have to say no.
I, I think, well, that's, that's fine. I think that this...
Yes, sir. Yeah, I, I just wanted to state, you know, the recommendation that came out of the Finance Committee, to me, was, was a fair compromise that I could support, because we added two additional years, supported the four-year grant, we proved within that structure that we have enough money to pay for the four-year grant in two years' time. So we, we were committed to that, and that was my understanding, Your Honor, of that. And then we would have not a, uh, binding for an advisory referendum on 2014. Now, if the amendment, which went from permanent now to four, passes, you know, we're, we're talking about making it four years with, with, um, an advisory referendum in 2014, that, uh, basically, a, a, and I understand your, your question of the wording, but we, we eventually got the wording correct on the gambling referendum. So that can be done in a proper, uh, standard. The goal that I thought came out, Your Honor, uh, the Finance Committee meeting was going to allow an overwhelming majority of the members of this council to ultimately support this, knowing that if we get the referendum, uh, feedback, that will guide us to where we need to go. But now, growing in it, uh, permanent, and, and now all of a sudden, we were flipping around to the four-year, I, I, I think, uh, ultimately i- is going to diffuse what I felt was a compromise that this body come together with, and, and was hoping that the public could see an overwhelming majority of support towards something which I hate to see collapse.
Okay. Alderman Consul.
I'd like to address that. There have been several times when we've had a motion on the floor, and Alderman Hayden has made an amendment to that motion, something we just did. He's talking about compromise coming to the center. We, I am not on the Finance Committee. Is he suggesting that everything that comes in from Finance Committee automatically be voted on with no give and take? Plus, he's talking about compromise. We compromised. We came down from permanent to four years, and I think that's very logical. And when you're talking, Mr. Ra, uh, Mr. Davidson, hit this. We are democratic, republican, arm of government. That means that we elect people who are supposed to make the decisions for us. It is our job to decide this. It is not necessarily supposed to go to the public, because it's not a demo, that would not be a democratic republic. It is our obligation to make the tough decisions, our obligation to get the job done. Thank you.
I'm out of the Finance Committee meeting, uh, Committee meeting, Your Honor. Okay, okay, you're, okay, you're heading. Was there someone, okay. Now, let me just, Alderman Holt.
I have my, thank you, I appreciate it. Um, I, I do have a statement, and I hope you will bear with me. I dated and married and enlisted men in the United States Air Force, but the literal end of my honeymoon was when I dropped to the officers training school. For many years, I had a T-shirt from there, and I'm still influenced by their model, which was always... Excuse me, Mr. President, I have the floor.
Jesus. I'm just saying, my stomach, that's what...
I'm sorry. My point was there's a common way to do things. The chain of events leading to this part of this special Bellevue sales tax was this. We all agreed the state was lazy making their payments. We did our best. I appreciate looking for the real tax, because it did not involve the state. It was the easiest answer to make payroll, basically. It was not popular, but it needed to be done to make payroll. That was repealed due to the efforts of some of us when we were elected, and it was replaced with this temporary tax to alleviate the pressure of the state not paying their bills. That objective, we all have agreed, has been met. The reserve fund has been replenished, and the need for the additional tax no longer exists. Although the state continues to lie in its payment, the coffers and bill are not there. This administration is now manipulating the emotions by stating that we have to have this tax in order to increase our police force. I applaud the members of the Finance Committee who came to compromise. It seemed like a logical conclusion, but it was based upon a false premise. The objective of that tax was never to increase security. If we need to institute a tax to increase security, we need to be upfront with the residents now. It is not a shell game. Oh, look, we've got some extra money. Let's put a carrot in front of the people and say, "This is what we'll do with it." And gosh, we've got to continue it, because now we've found a good cause. We need to be honorable people and let this tax sunset, because it has fulfilled its responsibility. Unless there is a substantial change, if you are petitioning the court for something, you must go in and show a substantial change in circumstances. By your own admission, the coffers are full. The emergency does not exist. The tax is no longer needed. To argue that it's going to be used for a good cause is false reasoning. If we want to be honest with the people, we need to come back, let this tax sunset, and start over. What we really need in this city is a forensic audit to discuss what is, our money is used for. Mr. Mayor, you said it was very hard for you to lay off six cops. I do not dispute that at all. I assure you, it was. But the reality is, you're not three assistants. We do not budget according to what is important. Kicking the can down the road by extending this tax for four years does make us exactly like the state legislature. We are not dealing with the problem here and now. We are just trying to deal with this extra money pot we have created, rather than going back and live on a budget we should live on. I feel that some of this has intentionally muddied the waters. To say this is a painless tax really is insulting to the people in this town. To say that, well, it's not on food, as if it's okay to wear it naked. I'm sorry, we are still taxing necessary things. We are doing it from a false premise. Although I appreciate the need for compromise, I think this is not the correct way to go about it.
Again, uh, we all, in our campaign last time, the number one concern was crime.
More than, many people told me that they wanted more sales on the street. Right now, we have an opportunity to put at least four and maybe more places with no tax, just this 25 cents on a hundred dollars on stuff, excluding, uh, medicine, groceries, drugs. I was a police officer for 39 years, and I can tell you this, nothing be first crime like the presence of police cars on the street. And it's... And it's just no new tax. Just this thing that keep this going a few more years, we can do this. I can't see why we're trying to fight it. Apparently, we're not interested in putting more police officers. If we were, there would be no saying.
We could be honest about it and say we're taxing four of them.
I did not recognize you. Alderman. Alderman Anthony, you haven't spoken yet, but you'll be next.
Mr. Mayor and Councilor. You know, as a common supporter of public safety, and like Gavin, a firefighter for thirty-one years, you know, I have to support hiring these officers. And I also would like to support this thing for four years with the idea that hopefully, some of the... After we've hired these people, that some of this money that we would use, that we wouldn't use out of other items, out of general fund and other items, maybe we could get this swimming pool on the road here. I would definitely like to see us, and you know that, you know, I'd definitely like to see to get this swimming pool on the books. And, you know, we get this thing started rolling in nature for this swimming pool. At least get some plans drawn up that we can start working on. And, you know, I think this is a way for us to do it. You know, let's be for real. Everybody, once I heard people talk about this pool, talk about other things, you cannot, you know, I mean, you can't get it for free. Nobody's giving away anything. You know, we need to just open eyes and know that we have to pay for the good services that this city has offered in the past and that it can offer us in the future. Twenty-five cents on a hundred dollars is not going to hurt for my grandkids to be able to go to the pool and swim. I'll pay that, you know, I mean, it's simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's make it clear though, the pool, while it's an important topic, and we gave an update, and Jim Schneider and I updated you not too long ago, that we continue to work on partnerships and hopefully bring something in the future. The pool is not a part of what we're proposing tonight. I understand your dialogue, so make it clear, so I'm not misleading anyone. Alderman Schneider, you have a comment.
Yes, Alderman Hayden and Alderman Holt have both made some good points. But what kind of makes sense is, and I don't know how it can be done or if, you know, if we have to go through and get it started. Alderman Hayden made the good point about, yes, we do need the police officers. But I'm one person for honesty. If I didn't have honesty, I wouldn't have a job. Because my work depends upon honesty. If we sunset this or retire it, let it expire, and then come back and approach the public that is, we want the same amount, quarter percent, so we could hire police officers. We've seen that it brings in the money, and it would be able to do it. I don't know if we have to stick to the same thing and just say, all right, either week. Keep it for two years, four years, or permanent. But what about the idea of letting it expire and turn around and come back while it's fresh on everybody's mind and ask them, now, this has nothing to do with why we had this quarter percent the last time. This is something different. We see we can bring in the extra money. Let's bring it in as to hire some police officers. Is the only thing I can say, because we've got to be honest and upfront with the people. Because when we got this, it was, or when we... This was voted in, it was to cover for what the state... Now, all this, we've seen, we've got extra money, and now we want to spend it. And this is one of my things that I'm really against is whenever we see something, whether it's good or not, we spend it. And if nothing else, start putting the money in a special account. And we, Alderman, get a statement every thirty days to show that that money has not been touched except for police officers.
Is there any more discussion?
Can I ask Alderman Schneider, are you putting in that possibly in the form of a motion?
We have a motion, we have an amendment right now.
I... That's what I'm asking. I didn't know what we could do.
We have an amendment here, and the amendment, just to reiterate, is to approve continuing the quarter percent sales tax for four more years. And then, at that time, as we approach that, have the city council continue to monitor it and reevaluate it at that time, correct? But we understand that four more years will, at least, Jamie, am I correct, that this will help us not be in a situation where we would be put in a tough situation on the grant, if we get the grant, the cops grant, this would totally fund it? Okay. We have a motion, and we have a second for the amendment.
And would you clarify that that...
An "I" vote for the amendment, for this vote. An "I" vote means that you vote for the four-year amendment...
Without the referendum.
Without the referendum and extends the tax, extends the, continues the quarter percent sales tax that's already in the order.
In order, Your Honor.
No, no.
The original motion from the Finance Committee was two years and have a referendum vote. You cannot amend and take away that. It was only to extend it four years.
She said, she said, her motion was four years and no referendum.
Isn't that correct?
She said, yeah. She didn't ever mention, she's never said the word referendum to that. She could have taken amendment to substantially change...
She never said that. Maybe she said that, and then she said, okay.
We had a recommendation, Your Honor, from the Finance Committee. Now, you can amend that, but you cannot substantially change the recommendation that came from the committee.
Change it from four years to two years.
Right, but you cannot, Mr. Davidson, take out the recommendation, but change it from two years to four years. The fact that the committee recommended that the public have a referendum vote.
I think you're losing me. If you can change one part, but why can't you change the other? I'm not arguing in any fashion, but I put a bad...
Maybe I lost some...
Can we listen to the attorney, please? I can't hear you.
There's been, there was a motion consistent with the recommendation from the committee and a second. Then there was a motion to amend it and a second. And you can amend it in any fashion that you so move if the majority of the council so votes. And then, if that amendment is approved, then you can, in absent any further amendment, then you vote on the motion as amended. If the amendment, the motion to amend fails and no other amendment is made, then you vote on the motion as it was originally presented.
Mr. Chairman, her motion is only addressing one aspect of the original motion of the recommendation from the Finance Committee. The recommendation for the Finance Committee was to extend the point two five tax for two years and to sunset December thirty-first, 2015, and then conduct an advisory referendum November 2014. Now, if you're stating, Mr. City Attorney, that this amendment can amend both of those and drop out one aspect, then I'm going to object and state that we have a two-point motion, and that both of those issues should be voted on separately, which is a proper point of order. Because you have a two-pronged motion.
Alderman Schneider, she made the motion. She made the motion. I thought it would... I could be wrong. I don't have a tape here to listen to it the same. I thought you said that did not include...
I did. I first said permanent and later I changed to four years without an advisory referendum.
Is that what you understood? And that was what you made the second motion?
Yes.
And that's what you want your amendment to state?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden, Mr. Consilom?
Yes.
That point of order, man, that's two-pronged. You're amending two different issues with one motion.
Well, they made a motion with two different issues with one motion in finance.
That's correct, which, which a point of order, Your Honor, could have, at that time, could have been offered to separate them, which we have done in the past.
I understood her amendment originally to say this. And I thought the conversation was very clear here about the fact that the...
You mean, point of order, there should be a vote on the amendment for years, and then there should be a separate vote on her amendment to want to extract the vote of the referendum people. Because they are two separate issues.
She made the motion to amend the single motion. So, that's the motion in the second. That's how it's voted on?
And your motion includes no referendum. And that was understood and taken by the second. So, that is the motion that's going to be voted on, and an "I" vote, I repeat, an "I" vote then will extend it, amend the Finance Committee's to four years with no referendum. You understand that way, Mr. Attorney?
Because the clerk read what exactly was voted on.
Well, I mean, I can't because that was never stated. So, I can't read that she's... She did not state that we were not going to have the non-binding referendum. Now, obviously, during discussion, it was assumed that that was taken out. And because the mayor did say that, and then she, at that time, did say, yes, I would like for it to be that way. But never formally, like, in her formal amendment, it was only to amend the tax to be permanent. And then they amended the tax from permanent to be four years. And that's all that's happened officially in person. But she can go ahead and change it much more.
Right. Just to make it official. Fairness, I will ask Alderman Schmidt to restate her motion.
All right, try it.
Okay, well, we're trying to get it right here.
I'm fighting to make amended motion that we extended for four years without any, not any advisory referendum, no referendum.
And that's my second.
And that's the second of Mr. Alderman Consell. Is what you understood it to be, but there was some confusion. Does everybody understand the amendment? A yes vote?
I want to note it, and my point of order is, you made your ruling, Mr. Chairman. Your ruling is wrong. This is a two-pronged, this is a two-pronged motion that we should be separated now because they are two separate issues. They should be voted on four years and then the referendum.
We have a motion, as explained here very thoroughly, and a second, amended motion to extend the quarter percent sales tax for four years with no advisory referendum.
So, can we take the date?
The four years with that sunset, December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen.
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 Can I ask you why that's... Is that a state thing? I mean, that doesn't coordinate to our fiscal group.
It's a state thing. You can only come on and explain in finance, which I don't think you're at the last Finance meeting. You can only enter into a tax two times a year.
So, that's why this doesn't coordinate it?
Exactly. We have a motion, we have a second. One last time, an "I" vote approves the four-year amendment with no advisory referendum, and no vote denies that. Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Consilom.
Aye.
Holt.
No.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Randall.
No.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
No.
Galletti.
No.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
No.
Schneider.
No.
Nine to seven. Nine to seven, the ayes have it. We now need to have the motion, our original motion voted on. The original motion that was brought up. Yeah, the motion.
Need to consider either a motion to approve or deny the motion as amended. This is the final action.
I know we have this motion. So, we have a motion, Alderman Consell, to approve the motion that just passed.
Point of order is, you have an original motion by the Finance Committee Chairman. There's no need for a motion from Mr. Consilom.
The previous roll call vote that was just made was on the motion to amend the motion. It's a procedural issue. Now, the amended motion is here, and there needs to be a motion to approve or deny that.
No, you're wrong, Mr. City Attorney. The amendment amended this man's motion. Now, you're going to make a motion to approve the amended motion? You're completely wrong with your parliamentary procedure. Ms. Schmidt's motion amended the Finance Committee Chairman's original motion.
Correct, amended the motion procedurally, but there needs to be action taken on that motion as amended.
He made a motion that was amended. This motion was amended.
So, what does this motion do?
But it was amended by vote. She can't unilaterally amend that. This is the same procedure that we used in May.
No.
It was a motion to approve.
Wouldn't my amendment now be a four-year motion?
Right, exactly. So, we have to find the, Mr. Consell's...
Right.
This would be Dr. Sillsby.
Oh, okay, I thought you said we didn't need to vote again on the thing. Well, that's my, I misunderstood you. I thought you were suggesting that there was not another vote necessary. No, I understand what you're saying.
There's no need for a motion from Mr. Consilom.
So, Dr. Sillsby's motion now stands as amended. With the Finance Committee...
Now, there's a second.
So, there's... Okay, so, Dr. Sillsby made the original motion. Who seconded?
I seconded.
I... The... Kent Randelson, Alderman Randelson. So, the motion now is amended that says it's extension for four years with the no sunset. So, we're having to vote the same thing again to be in parliamentary procedure. A little evening. I'm sorry. A yes vote now will confirm the amended original motion to say the tax would be, the quarter percent sales tax would be extended for four years with no advisory referendum.
Mr. Carter?
Correct.
Okay, Alderman Hayden, which... Hold on.
There's a loud debate again. Just go to state, Jan. I came here this evening to support this and to be more clear on the street. And I certainly support that. But what we did tonight is we created a system where I thought we had, for the public to see that the city council worked in unison. Instead, we went from what I thought was going to be an overwhelming majority vote to we're going to change it around and cram it down our throats. I cannot support taking away the referendum ballot issue from the people because I believe that is the best way to get the input from the citizens. And it also is the best way, Your Honor, to create trust with the people that we were trying to work with them, and we weren't pulling the wool over their eyes two years ago when we stated that this was going to be a temporary tax. And now, we've basically, in my mind, went backwards on trust. So, I support the police, ladies and gentlemen, but the motion that was amended here tonight, taking away the public having a chance to weigh in is a deal breaker.
Alderman Hayden, I would tell you, there can still be a possible referendum after four years. What we did tonight was extend what we, in the process that you're doing, is to extend this so that we feel comfortable and live up to the grant opportunity on four cups.
We've proven, Your Honor, that we can pay for that in two years. Now, what you did is you've taken the situation that, again, that we had a fair and broad compromise out of Finance Committee, and now you want to use the cops as a scare tactic and hold us hostage over four years when you know for a fact that there's enough money, that we've proven it, that we can pay for the grant in one year. And that's been sent to you in black and white.
Alderman Schneider.
I just think we've left the people down because why did we even put a sunset clause in? And it was supposed to be on the ballot for two years. That's what came out of the Finance Committee. I just left the people down very wrongly. I mean...
Alderman. Excuse me, Your Honor. I'd like to point out...
I was talking yet.
Hold it. Oh, are you not finished?
No, I wasn't.
Oh, excuse me. I didn't know.
We told the people that we were going to have a sunset clause in two years. They were all under the... They were all under the impression that we were going to hold to our word that this tax would expire. It was to get us through the slump from the money from the state. And now we've got it four years? This is wrong. The people aren't going to trust any of us. They're going to think y'all lie.
I, I would like to comment when she said it came from the finance committee. The finance committee can make a recommendation, but it is the obligation of this council, all sixteen of us, to decide. And just because it came out of the finance committee a certain way does not mean that we have to do that. That's what we're here for. And we're... If, if you thought that it was a promise because it came out financed that way, you thought wrong because this council is the one that makes the decision, all sixteen.
Here, here.
I just want to echo the comments that Alderman Hayden and Alderman Schneider made, that voting against this is in no way a condemnation or, or non-support of the police force. Absolutely ran on public safety. I still believe in it. I am perfectly willing to pass a tax for public safety as long as the public knows in advance that is the purpose of this tax. I am voting no for this because I believe it's a lie. I believe we have misrepresented to the public what we are doing, manipulated people's emotions, and I am appalled at the process.
Personally feel that anybody that's voting no against this is talking out of both sides of their mouth. You do not pay for cops, you pay for, just pay for them. You, it takes money. And to say that you are for public safety, but you're going to vote against these paths, where do you think, it's like Johnny said, where do you think money, where do you think these things come from? They have to come from taxes. So, I think you're, in your opinion, in my opinion, you're talking out of both sides of your mouth. You vote no tonight. You're telling the police officers that you're not supporting.
I just opened here a couple times now, saying that I support the police officers. What I do not support is extending the time limit on the, on the tax. My idea was to readdress this in two years, not cut it off in two years. Readdress the financial situation and then make a decision then. I am not talking out of both sides of my mouth. I'm talking to what I believe. Thank you.
Alderman.
Yes, thank you. I would point out again, Mr. Davidson, you voted no in the finance committee against So, I would just suggest to you that when it comes to treating other Aldermen in this body, that we show each other due respect.
I have been called dishonest by this Alderman. I have been called dishonorable by that Alderman. As a whole, I sit here when the public stands up and calls the mayor names, called all of us cronyism, everything else, and yet we don't say anything. We're not allowed to say anything. I think that that, when, when somebody can call us dishonorable, somebody can call us dishonest, what am I saying? That you're talking out of both sides of your mouth? I don't think that, I think I'm saying...
What I request, you know, is...
I will, I will... They don't treat me with respect.
Okay, I think Alderman Schneider, unless you have something new?
Well, yes, it, uh, is what he was just saying. The reporter, Paul on the State, um, this three grades committee, he told me I had no right to make any comments about the cemetery because it was not my war.
Alderman Schneider, the second. Let's, let's relate to the business end. We have a motion. Let's go back. We have a motion we have to vote on to finalize this. The motion now from Alderman Sillsby's, the motion, original motion was amended, and the vote is, if you vote yes, it's for four-year extension of the quarter percent sales tax with no referendum at that time. Is that understood? And we have the motion in the second. Uh, that was, that was amended, okay? Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Consola.
Yes.
Holt.
No.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood's.
Aye.
Randall.
No.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
No.
Galletti.
No.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
No.
Schneider. Okay, at this time, um, and, and it's, it's my fault, but just so you know, I passed it out just before we take recess. Alderman Meyer, former Alderman Meyer, had sent in, uh, she wanted it entered to the record. I will give that to you. It was her support. I know it's after the fact. My fault here, I had staring at me, and I didn't enter it, but I did give it to Alderman earlier, just to enter that into the record, her support for the extension of the tax. Uh, I will grant a, a four-minute break for, for, uh, courtesy, and then we'll be back to finish the, uh, uh, courtesy rest hour.
I have a question. I'm confused, so probably don't get no... But I have four years left. You gotta put your name on it. Keep your turn.
No comment. If we need to, I think I'm gonna...
You're gonna call her in the...
Especially if I concentrate on last year's story on deadline.
You do email. Your mic on that. Four point two million dollars paid for fourteen new officers. Why we all... All right, one second. Four point two million dollars paid for fourteen officers. It's just a big money grab. Other things, according to small amount of money, of course, to the police. According to their own figure, really four hundred and thirty thousand dollars satisfied the ransom. So, for, for years, they keep up to nine hundred and fifty thousand, four officers. Less than five and eight thousand, a big ransom. So, over the four years now, we're going to collect four point eight million dollars She may call me later. Wish you'd read it. It's just deep, right? Yeah. I'm not... We're talking our... But I forgot my... I forgot your name. We have a special trust fund. Wow, you ever seen the eight three card? Yeah, okay, that's what happens. You can, because I think he said that... Be shown that self... I took off to say that. Collected everything. Say, that look, we have one occasion. And that, that each year's budget, yeah, I do it now. Accountant said that one has to be used. Lost on the motion. I don't have the... And it's, uh, happens, I knew the half is four years. I can do it, at least, right? Like, maybe last time, I don't like, you know, it's not that, I don't know. I think now, I'm so white. I'm, I'm, I feel like that, you know, two years, that's exactly... Look, if you're opposed to vote on this first, you're going to...
No, no, okay. Hold on, the amendment.
Okay, so, amendment.
If the amendment failed...
It's all news, but you're trying to follow everybody. It's, it's... You gotta get across the voice without real DMs, right? Tired of listening. See, it's not the way to go. But I want to go to special fund, like, to talk about, to where it's not... It costs us three hundred and two million dollars, hire fourteen officers, or eleven four hours, or ten officers, not four more firefighters. Then, make a permit. I would say, make a permit and hire those people. Try to be self-sufficient, and then if we get great...
You want to deal with this. If we had passed that and just said, okay, even if we said, okay, we're going to hire ten officers, four firefighters, and we're going to be able to pay for them, then if they get the grant, it's an extra five hundred thousand dollars.
Right, which you go right into that...
Right, and then you can play the three-card money. You can say, okay, well, wait, we got the grant money, so we'll take five hundred thousand percent else. But you still have your fourteen new employees.
It's, it's, this idea of four, uh, four million dollars. There's a slight advantage to that. It is one. Like I say, I'm, this is all, I'm so confused there. You already said the bargain's here, but the four percent... But, yeah, that's right. Because I'm just like, trying to follow that, so, I could get it, like, if I had... Sometimes I understand these things, and I'm like, oh, and then...
And you don't, to the end of it, what really happens is...
Yeah. I was at the five, six, eight, nine, I was like, you know, I just hate to kind of listen...
And even that's... That's an odd thing.
Right, so, lots of places, please, over there.
Yeah, and the committees. The committees is where most of this stuff happens.
Give it a try.
Man, have a time before it cuts.
No, I don't, like I say, I just tried to make some... Me, the cops, we, we, wherever, you know, I thought it was good, we, we... Many of the cops, they're bidding committees, but I haven't been... Okay, but I've touched base with here and there. Alderman, they mean, they mean, they, like, most of the... Okay, I didn't...
Just for this one, just upstairs.
I didn't know, I thought, would be...
Right here, you can go to the website, you see all this...
Yeah, I just looked at, before I came up today.
Actually, the new website, we have this little...
I looked at it tonight, and I came on, uh, and you have a date, and that's, uh, not my idea, just have a date, and tell you what's... Pretty much everything I have here on the website. I tried to do that, like...
This is here, and what Alderman did, which is a thick packet.
I never, I never...
Available on the counter, you know, with... So, the public can see all the details that goes behind all the...
Oh, okay, I never knew.
But if they don't put that in stock, that would be here to the... Then you can know a little bit, you're...
I'm trying to figure out, man. I guess, these papers, that's what I...
Usually by comment, bringing comments has the fourth grade battles.
So, yeah. It's kind of a tongue-in-cheek thing. Really, it's... I have to ask, you know, ladies and gentlemen. I read this one, I'm like, I thought it was... I think you have to, everybody, you know, careful, I would say, you don't, you have to, I would say, hire...
Ladies and gentlemen, we got a question. We're going to reconvene, ladies and gentlemen. We're down to page two, item twelve, communications. Is there, how many of them we missed here? Okay, so Alderman are here. Okay, Alderman Consolo?
That's where checking on that, it's pretty... They're more than...
Oh, is that coming up? Oh, just to get an answer, to clarify that, okay. That was a question in the past. I'll give you a second, you have to do that. That's for purposes of future discussion. I did agree when you brought that to my attention, I just looked at you. Okay, if you can do that quietly, I'm going to let the clerk go ahead and read the communications.
Communications from Nicole Platts, Coaster, Coaster, sorry, but I requested permission to have Avon Street blocked off with no parking at 20300 block on September 21st, 2013, from 12:00 AM until 6:00 PM. Use the street for wedding photos, for Avon Street resident.
I, I, I'd like to make the motion to approve it, but that's really, she, there's a whole of them missed. 10:00 AM in the morning to 6:00 PM, they're going to, they want to have it, they take pictures on this street.
Okay, so 10:00 AM until, and they, they got a house in this region, right?
They own a house, yeah.
They own a house, so, okay, so everybody understands that? So, motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Cybert. Any discussion on that motion with the change?
I'm, I'm still not quite understanding the intent. What time is the wedding? Is the wedding on the stretch?
No, 1:30, the weddings are 1:30, but they want to take pictures before the wedding, and then before they go to the reception, which is at Quirkyville Bus, at 5 o'clock, they want to be able to take pictures.